Good evening and welcome to the May Fort Worth Team School Committee Meeting. I want to first apologize for our slightly late start, but we were meeting with the City Council Finance Subcommittee around budget issues, and the meeting ran a little bit over, so our apologies, but we're here now. So this meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Media.
Dr. Leclerc.
They moved my flag. I was gonna say, where'd my flag go? Can we please stand for a moment of silence and the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next regular school committee meetings will be May 28th, June 11th, July 23rd, August 13th, and September 10th, 2019. There will be no school on Monday, May 27th due to Memorial Day, and the last day of school is June 18th, 2019. I would also like to share with you that the East Hampton High School We the People Team placed 19th at the national competition held recently in Washington DC. I understand this is the highest place a Massachusetts team has ever received.
Wow.
So kudos to them.
That's awesome.
That's what I learned it from the other night.
Wow, that's fantastic.
Do we have correspondence?
No correspondence this evening.
Do we have gifts?
We do. We would like to please vote to accept with gratitude and appreciation the following gifts: The Patel family for the donation of $100 to the East Hampton Healthy Youth Coalition, and Southampton Big Y for the donation of a $25 gift card to the East Hampton Healthy Youth Coalition.
A second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we've come to public speak. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and say anything?
No, you're doing your presentation after.
Oh, so this is, that's not us yet?
No, not you, not you yet.
Almost.
You're excited. You're eager. You like that.
Okay, well then we'll go on. Our student representative is not here, so we're gonna go right on to Subcommittee Reports. Finance Subcommittee.
Yes, we do have an update.
We have a lot of finance papers.
A lot of finance papers that we're dealing with right now, yes. So one of the things that we were, we met on and wanted to sort of update, is it in our minutes though?
It's in the updated section.
Okay, no, but those are minutes. So, okay, so this is not in, Dr. Leclerc, this didn't get put into the notes for today's? And there was a quarterly report. It is in there.
Right after the superintendent's report.
See, I did give it to her.
Okay.
I did it that night.
Just, I think it's helpful for us all to have the numbers in front of us, so I don't...
It's in there.
Where? Oh, okay, it's very, very, very end.
It's after all those pauses.
It's after everything else.
Sorry.
That's okay, after the superintendent's report. Okay. So this is the third quarter report on our FY 2019 operating budget. This is sort of taking, as you can see, across the numbers, the budgeted amount for this fiscal year, the year-to-date actuals, what we already understand are encumbered and thereby what the totals are. The ultimate overall sort of review of this is there's a couple of key pieces here. One is that the budget to, was to apply $70,000 worth in transportation fees and budget to apply $400,000 circuit breaker funds. Some of the adjustments that I think we originally had looked over previously when we were looking at this budget with, after the second quarter review, was that we were looking at potentially having to draw upon resources that might have been upwards of $250,000 worth of reserves. And that was sort of worst-case scenario. Best-case scenario might have been $100,000. The forecasting now that we have into our third quarter report is that we've actually done much better than we originally anticipated. We are now looking, actually being budget neutral to potentially worst-case scenario being $100,000 over. And so the amount reserves then will be greater than what we had originally anticipated. The couple of different areas that, some of the different changes in terms of that was around some of the transportation costs, particularly for foster students and vocational transportation. So both of those things decreased what we had originally thought was going to be added to our budget, and that's where that has now lessened than what we originally had anticipated, and that's why we're on a better project, better prospect than we originally thought we were gonna be, heading towards the end of the fiscal year. I hope I'm being clear. Either Cindy or Jonathan or somebody else that you have.
It's looking up.
It's looking better than we, originally when we were working on this budget, we were thinking, coming out of halfway through the year, we were thinking that we were looking at more additional costs than now we're projecting.
Okay.
So now we're in a better place to be in line with what our original budget had planned to be, and so that puts us in a better place then to end this fiscal year as well as looking into next fiscal year.
And Dale had told us this, that often it looks really bad for a short period of time and then it gets better. So we need quarterly to just look at that and see, are we on track? You know, is this a routine year or is something, you know, gonna come and get us that we didn't anticipate? And so right now it's looking like it's gonna be much better than we thought, which is good news. So, thank you.
Please, Mayor.
We wanna, we have the minutes.
Yep, so... I'm sorry, so...
Do we need to, we're gonna accept those minutes?
So we're gonna approve?
No.
No, we approved that for a little.
We don't have to, so we just have them.
Okay, so one of the other things that was coming up in our last Finance Subcommittee meeting is that based on the budget that we had approved as a school committee and put forward to the mayor to include in her budget to go to the city, that is not the budget that she put forward to the City Council. There is a difference of $131,000 between what was approved by our budget and what she put forward to the City Council. And so there is under review how now we are going to look at adjusting the school committee's budget for FY 20 to make up that difference. And that is under review by Dr. Leclerc and her leadership team, and will be brought forward to the Finance Subcommittee at our next meeting in two weeks. That will be announced shortly. But, so that's something that we have to review in order to approve at the Finance Subcommittee meeting, and then will be brought to this, to the school committee at the June 11th meeting. So just know that we'll be, at June 11th, we will be reviewing a revised FY 20 budget to then move forward in alignment with what the mayor and the City Council is going to be working with. You have a question?
That was 133?
131,000.
131,000.
The difference was between a 2.5, 2% increase to the budget that we were requesting and what this body had approved versus the 1.76% that she had moved forward to the City Council in her budget.
So at this point, that is, there's kind of no more negotiation on the city side. It's on us to figure out that 131,000 dollar gap. There's no chance that there will be...
The City Council is not, does not have the power to increase our budget, and the mayor is not interested in increasing our budget.
Okay.
So that is the budget that she has put forward. That is the budget that we have to then find alignment with, and so we are looking at how best we can do that to minimize the impacts.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, on to policy review.
All right, so again with thanks to Shannon, who has been diligently going through our policy book and working to eliminate a lot of out-of-date and unnecessary documents that are in that manual. With thanks and also begrudgingly, we now have to subject ourselves to many, many votes. But I think that all of these policies, the changes are, they're merely paperwork. We're either deleting things that are procedures as opposed to actual policy, so they're not, they shouldn't really belong in the policy manual, or updating things that have, are from the 70s and 80s that need to be replaced with more recent policies. So if you have any questions and you want to slow me down and ask for details, please do, but otherwise I will just move through them as quickly as possible. So I would make a motion to accept the first reading to delete BDD, School Committee Procedures, as it is a procedure and not a policy.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
I'll make a motion to accept the first reading to delete BDDR, School Committee Procedures, for the same reason.
Second.
All those in favor?
ACABR, Sexual Harassment Complaint, is also a procedure as opposed to a policy, so I make a motion to accept the first reading to delete that policy.
Second.
All those in favor?
Same for ACABE, Sexual Harassment. I make a motion for the first reading to delete.
Second.
All those in favor?
Our ACAC, General Harassment Prevention, is outdated and made obsolete by the more recent AG-approved policy, so I would make a motion to accept the first reading to delete that policy.
I'll second. Good, good job. All those in favor?
ACBA, Section 504, an ADA procedure, again, both procedures, not policy. I would make a motion to accept the first reading to delete.
Second.
All those in favor?
ACBRA, Discrimination Grievance Procedure, procedure not policy. I make a motion for the first reading to delete.
Second.
All those in favor?
AEI, Collaborative Site-Based Decision-Making, is a procedure. I would make a motion to accept the first reading to delete.
Second.
Shannon can second. All those in favor?
AEE, School Committee Expectations, Visions, and Values, is an outdated document. It's not actually a policy, it's just a philosophy. So I would make a motion to accept the first reading to delete this document.
Second. I was waiting for you. You go.
I'll second. All those in favor? Jonathan Johnson.
AFCR, Evaluation of Professional Staff, is a very obsolete document with some procedure from 1986 and not in use anymore, so I'd make a motion to accept the first reading to delete this one.
Second.
All those in favor?
And then finally, we would like to make a motion to accept the first reading to replace EPSDBCD, School Committee Superintendent Relationship, with the more current and MASC-approved version of this policy, which is MASC-BDD.
Second.
All those in favor?
Now, do we have minutes at the top of that list?
We do have minutes, but I don't think...
We don't approve them.
We don't need to approve them, so they're there.
You need to make a motion to delete the BCD.
No, she didn't.
Replace and delete. She kind of combined the two of them.
She didn't.
She combined them.
Yep, okay, sorry. I didn't know we could do that.
Thank you.
I just wanna say, I really applaud the work that you guys have done, the Policy Review Subcommittee. It is really painstaking to go through every single policy. I mean, it is huge. And then to decide whether or not it's outdated and what you're gonna replace it with. So I know you guys have worked really diligently, and I just wanna thank you. I appreciate this work.
Great. Again, thanks to Shannon for being so careful about it.
She's very diligent at going through that huge binder.
We haven't yet figured out how.
Stay until it's done. Well, it's a frighteningly big binder.
Ten years ago.
The number of policies is mind-boggling.
Our big dream is to get it digitized. We haven't yet figured out how to find the resources to do that, but we think that that is ultimately sort of something that needs to happen for the school committee to have these files easier. You know, it would be nice for the purpose of everyone in the district and the community to be able to see these files, and they're locked on paper, so...
Well, go Policy Review.
Yeah, well, we're kinda...
You guys have done a great job. So now do we have a collaborative update?
Well, we haven't met, but I did submit my evaluation of Executive Director Bill Deal. By all accounts, he's done a fantastic job, as he so often does, and yet continues to go above and beyond in trying to improve himself and his personal skills. And I think he exhibited that very well this past year and reflected as much in my evaluation. I believe at our next meeting, which is the 29th of this month, we'll probably be taking a closer look at the overall sort of financial situation for the collaborative as we approach the end of the fiscal year. So I'll share about that then.
When are the evaluations for Bill going to be?
Well, they were due on the, like, we had to have our stuff in by the 10th of May. I don't know exactly when the Subcommittee is meeting to review them.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember.
I doubt, well, you never know.
Since you've made it June, then it'll be...
Yeah, I'll have to see if we even have, we won't have a meeting in June. So I'd say there's a good chance we'll be taking a look at this on the 29th. I'll let you know.
All right, thank you. Education, policy update.
Hi, yes. So since we last met, we, four of us had the opportunity to go to the MASC Day on the Hill on May 1st in Boston. I don't know if anyone else has anything they'd like to say about that day, but I think it was, it was great to gather with other school committee members from across the state, and we had the opportunity to meet with a couple of different representatives, our own Dan Carey and then also Lindsay Sabadosa. And we didn't get to meet with Representative Alice Peish, but we met with one of her staffers and got to talk with her a bit. There's not really concrete news, except...
I was optimistic.
Okay.
Aaron, were you optimistic as well, and Jonathan, that I feel that hopefully before the summer there will be movement to change the foundation budget? So, but we as a district, students, teachers, across the state, we all have to band together and we have to push this through. So this Thursday, it's very important for all of us, as I said, school committee members, teachers, students, parents, to go to one of two locations. We are fortunate that we can all go to Springfield, which is close. So there are two rallies to fund our future. This Thursday, Springfield, the City Hall steps. I believe people start gathering at 4 o'clock, and everyone should wear red for Ed. And there's also gonna be a similar, even bigger rally in Boston. So we have to continue showing our state reps and our senators and the governor that we are relentless. We are not going to take this inadequate funding. We must forge ahead. That's how I feel.
Yeah.
And if I could just add, I mean, so I think that the challenge that lies us before us, I think that one of the things that many people are saying and sort of recognizing, this was last done 20 years ago, right? So this is sort of the catchphrase that's being said, is this is a generational decision that's happening around how they fund our schools. So I think that I would agree with you that I'm optimistic that the funding formula is gonna be changed, and the funding formula will be better than it is today. However, how, how much change? How much progress in terms of the funding that they have promised from the state all along, let alone recognizing our current challenges as school districts, whether regional transportation costs for some of our regions out here or a number of other different unfunded mandates that they keep putting down? I think that the fight is not done. We absolutely have to go to those rallies. We absolutely have to be speaking out, because yes, they're gonna change the formula, but how are they gonna change the formula? How much extra money are they really gonna fund? I mean, we're looking at right now, this year, the state to meet what its prior funding should have been, right? We're not even talking about changing the formula. But what should have been right now is about $1 billion more in state funding to school education. That's not even changing the formula. That's just that they aren't paying. And yet the budgets that are now being put forward are a couple hundred million more, but it's still not even meeting that basic minimum of what the formula should be paid. So yes, I'm optimistic that the formula is gonna be changed and that we're gonna get a new funding formula this year, but I think we as Western Massachusetts absolutely have to be speaking out and absolutely demanding not only a better change to the formula, but that they actually fund what the formula is. So yes, everybody needs to be at those events and calling representatives, pushing, and I would say not just your local representatives, 'cause Dan Carey, who's our local rep, is 100% with us, but calling, everybody else on the Education Committee is an important people to call because they're the ones reviewing that right now and will actually put forward what the final compromise bill might be. So every single person on the Education Committee within our state government needs to get a phone call, needs to be pushed, so that we get a better formula and that they actually then fund that formula that's determined.
And I'd like to add that we went to Representative Peish's office because she made a statement. When some of us went to the collaborative to meet with the Education Committee, and she said she spends far too much time talking about the charter school issue and that she doesn't feel that we should be focused on the funds that are being siphoned from our budgets. So I made sure to go and speak with her aide to let her know that that was an outlandish statement because I have seen firsthand the deleterious effects of the siphoning of those funds. So, and I also brought to the attention of our reps that we really have to focus on social-emotional issues of not only students, but of the teachers who have to work overtime to try to help those special needs of students with things facing them in our current society. So there are many issues in addition to the four areas of the foundation budget that we need to work with. Excellent. Thank you. Wellness Committee? Oh, Wellness Committee. Now let me get back to wellness. You can see I'm very passionate about the funding issues. So last Wednesday was a phenomenal second annual, but first annual, all-city walk-in bike and roll-to-school event. I was actually able to capture a picture of a student who arrived late on roller blades, so I was like, yes, there's my roller. So more than 200 students showed up. We had phenomenal support from our police department. I wanna give special thanks to Sergeant Scribner, who really worked with his colleagues in the police department and Chief Alberti. They provided wonderful supervision. They closed off roads. They provided safe crossing for the students walking and on bikes. Tandem provided the bagels and the cream cheese. Our food service provided fruit. It was phenomenal. And we had one of the students who's on the Healthy Youth Coalition, Mara, who was there helping the whole time. And we gave out these great, this is one of the great swag things that we had. You press and, let's see if it's gonna work. It's flashing. Great reflectors, and you can make it solid, too. Yes, students really love getting that. And bands for, reflective bands for their pants. So it was just a very positive event to work towards wellness and safe routes to schools. So thank you, everyone who supported that.
Thank you for all your coordination.
My pleasure.
Well, that's a lot of work.
I love doing that. Better than fighting. Health and safety.
There has been another meeting.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else that we wanna put on before we go on to our superintendent update? We good? All right. Superintendent update.
So now I have the opportunity to introduce a group from the middle school. I recently had a request to go and visit them at the middle school. Mrs. Brier and her students have a group called the We Group. And they invited me after school one day, and they presented their program to me. They did an excellent job, these two young ladies. And I think they're going to present the information about all of the things that their group does at the middle school, and I know that they're, they're hoping to kind of grow. I think they do it at Maple, it's Maple as well, but they wanna kind of grow in both directions at some point. So ladies, would you please come up to the podium? Welcome.
Hi there. Yep, we're good. Got this. Is this where we are?
We're a friendly group, yes.
Yeah, okay, this is where we are.
You can, yeah, you can close the computer if it's in your way.
Is that all right?
Yep.
Okay, great. All right. So, hi there. Thank you for creating the space and the time for us to be here and to share the work that we're doing and our goals. And I wanted to introduce you to Emily Swazniak and also Ava Stewart, who have been with me and with our We Group for a few years. And why don't you guys go ahead?
So we want to introduce who We is and what We does and how it aligns with the Equity and Inclusion Committee Goals Work Group. And we want to create a pipeline from the elementary schools to the high school. And we want to problem-solve and get the high school and center Pepin involved.
So to really help you guys understand exactly what We is, We is an international organization that fundraises for local and global causes and raises awareness through many campaigns, and also has a curriculum to help the students learn about the campaigns that we're doing.
So We works locally and globally. And locally, we work, we educate on effects of poverty and hunger and water justice issues, especially like at the Water Walk that is this Sunday from 1:00 to 4:00.
She'd totally come out and support.
This year, specific kids are, and We are focusing, are doing projects and focusing on LGBTQ plus rights, racism, zoos, homelessness, hunger, depression, and anxiety.
So We has five pillars that they like to focus on. The first one is education. Second is clean water and sanitation. Third is sustainable agriculture. Fourth is healthcare. And the fifth one is job opportunities. So for the past two years, we focused on clean water, sanitation, and sustainable agriculture. And we, we had our first annual Water Walk last year, and we're having it again this year. And a lot of our global, like fundraising for the Water Walk goes to Kalthana, India, and also in our nation for the Navajo Water Project.
Water Walk in New Mexico.
In New Mexico.
Yeah.
And so we really focused on this year. And along with like the individual group projects with the LGBTQ plus and all the other things, we also have kids that are doing individual water projects that we presented at the Water Walk. So we have kids that are doing the effects of plastic in the ocean, water pollution, and also water challenges in South Africa. The Navajo Nation Water Project, Springfield Water, Flint, Michigan, and some solutions for the problems to learn. And there's also more water packs at the Water Walk as well.
Yeah. We also provide opportunities to, for students to engage in the broader community. First of all, I do wanna say, I know Jonathan Schmidt, I met Jonathan at the Open House at East Hampton Media, and we work, since We has started, which was seven years ago now, ECAT has been part of our, has worked in collaboration with us incredibly. I mean, they have given so much to us. So we work with ECAT. We've done, we've done digital storytelling. We've made commercials. The digital storytelling was on poverty and hunger issues and also clothing, the clothing industry. They've done commercials for us, or we've done the commercials. And it used to be when they were at Whitebrook, we'd just like walk in and go, can you do a commercial? We got a campaign starting tomorrow. And they'd be like, oh, sure, come on, let's go. They always have been incredible, and we're grateful for them. They also created a documentary of the work that we've done one year. So they've been really great. With the Water Walk, we connect with National Water Park Committee, which next year what we're going to do is create a Day, East Hampton Day of Service, which will be the Cleanup Day in collaboration with the Cleanup Day, and then coming over and learning about water issues and ways that we can support clean water.
clean water initiatives here in the community as well as elsewhere in the world. We work with, also on the Water Walk, we work with Hilltown Charter School. And we always have, we've tried to work with every school in East Hampton to make it a complete school-wide, East Hampton school-wide event. We're having a little bit of trouble with Williston and getting someone on board at this time. We also have done We Day X, where East Hampton Media has been a great partner with us with that, which is a celebration that we do at the end of the year, or have done at the end of the year at Whitebrook, which really celebrates all the work that We have done. Ava, we'll go into that a little bit later more. We volunteer at the East Hampton Community Center. We've been doing it for six years. Every month, I bring a group of kids over there. The overarching question for the kids, the essential question is who's being served? When we go to serve, actually, who is being served? And now the kids are so familiar with the people who are there that actually, it's like, all right, come on, guys, we gotta work. We gotta get back to work, because it's wonderful. They're really connecting with the people. We work with, also have networked and worked with Corcello, the Butcheria here in town, Anthony Meltingtallow and Rhonda Anderson, who are indigenous people who live in this, who currently are living in this area in Western Mass to come work with us and come talk to our classes and We in regards to water issues. Mountain View Farm to talk about sustainable agriculture. Hope from the Garden Project, which is in our East Hampton schools. Where we, last year she came and she actually talked to us and brought kids out in the garden who wanted to work there to learn about the differences between farming in Calthana, India versus the farming that we do here, and what would it actually look like if a family of four needed to use farming as their method for food in this, in our town today. Robin is an invaluable resource at the East Hampton Community Center, where we collect for the food pantry. We have toiletry drives, we have diaper drives, we get grant money for them. We apply for grants and get them, and give them the money so that they can buy whatever they need to support our community and the people who need it. We, working at the East Hampton Community also supports intergenerational opportunities for connection as the kids are working with marginalized communities. And we also have a lot of parent involvement. I have to tell you that we have some really strong parents who've worked with We. We could not do what we do to the extent that we do it if it wasn't for the parents. And at the end of our presentation, we'll give you our updated brochure and also our impact statement, which is long and arduous, but I did that on purpose. And Mrs. Leclerc said that was a good idea, so we followed what she had to say. Because it's a long document, but it shows you how we started off with eight kids and then went to 40 over the years. And this year, we didn't include any new students, because the kids in We wanted to go deeper on the issues and didn't want to just do surface things. Next year, we'll open that up again as our eighth graders move on. But you'll see how that, how it's, how we've evolved and the impacts that we've made, not just in the USA and in our community, but also globally.
So, We supports current events at and beyond the school with many things like assemblies, bake sales, the Water Walk. We campaigns, like We Scare Hunger, We Day X, which is a celebration. And we, like, we celebrate everything that We has done and that our school has done in like the past year. And we also have dances to raise money, we help out the community center. We have public service announcements when we have campaigns. And we educate the school on what we're doing with this campaign. We have random acts of kindness, like Valentines that we pass out. We hang, when we have a campaign or something like the Water Walk or a bake sale, we will hang posters to educate the school. And we have lots of volunteers in We.
Yeah, we also create student leaders. That's a huge part of We, is to create leadership. On the Water Walk, we have two students from We Club who are part of our steering committee. At the bake sale, I have students who, first of all, I must say that the bake sales are held during teacher, parent-teacher conferences, which means I'm not around. The, we have, the kids are collecting money, handling all the money, handling, yeah, one person. One person is in charge of that. We have, they're handling the whole bake sale. Even, and what's been beautiful to watch is that as the kids have been part of We for, over time, that they're actually like, you know what, Ms. Breyer, we got this. We want to, I want to start leading this charge, and it's wonderful. Emily Swazniak and Ava both created a campaign called Choose Kindness, which will be on, probably happening next year. And I will point out that they won't actually be in.
I won't be here.
Are you gonna be here? Oh, you're seventh or seventh?
Yeah, she's seventh.
Emily Swazniak won't be there next year. But We doesn't, We Group doesn't look just for the short term, we're in for the long haul. So, everything we do is always about over time and in the future. And hopefully Emily Swazniak will be able to come when we, and can talk about that campaign as well, both of them. Yeah. We also have, I've also brought quite a few kids to the Equity Steering Committee meeting that are, that is for the middle school and elementary. I coordinated kids going to the La Plante Restorative Justice Program on a Saturday. And currently, we had two children this year, and we don't know the results yet, who applied for a scholarship to the We Leadership Camp in Toronto, Canada, where they would learn about sustainable development product, issues, as well as being with other change agents of their age and older and younger, and learning from each other, not only on global issues, but local issues as well, and how to really be leaders in their community.
Now, what I've kind of realized as being like a student in one of these groups is that a leader of a group can talk on and on and on about how impactful it is on the students. But I think what really impacts people is when a student says how it really feels to them. So, as a student in this program for two years now, I really feel like as a person, it's made me grow more confident. And it's made me realize that I'm not just a little girl from Massachusetts and East Hampton that can't do anything. I'm not just this lonely person. I can actually impact things. And with a bunch of people, we can do so much, like with our Choose Kindness campaign. So, what We realized was that in our school, a lot of people were like treating people differently if they looked different. And we like immediately related to the movie Wonder. So, we are planning to show the movie. And we're having one of, fifth grade teacher, Ms. Nicholas, she has a niece that has the same condition as the Augie in the movie, so she's gonna come speak. And we're gonna, we're gonna allow kids to reflect back and realize what they're doing, why they're saying things, if they are even, and even if they're just bystanders and watching, what they can do to stop it. Really stop it. And realizing that we could spearhead something and that as a group, we can create change, has like, and has like really, like, made me feel better as a person. And even though I'm moving on to the high school, that doesn't mean I'm gonna not stop coming on Thursday. So, it doesn't mean that, oh, high school, no more We. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna let that barrier stop me from coming back to We, because it's a really important part of what I've been trying to focus on as a leader.
Volunteer.
Yeah, and I'm gonna continue volunteering, and I'm gonna continue all the stuff that I've been doing, because I am a student leader, and that's, and just leaving the school isn't gonna, isn't gonna stop me from being a student leader.
Do you want to talk about how to, did you, are you ready to go?
No.
So, We also is major on supporting students of color, immigrant students, multilingual students, students of different religion, and LGBTQ+ students. And we have an idea of creating a cookbook with my mom, Amy Davis.
Little plug there.
At the high school. To create a cookbook that will allow families with recipes near and dear to their heart, that like are a tradition in their family. And we'll have these all in a cookbook, and it will allow students to learn about these different religions and cultures without like having these families feel uncomfortable or feel like they're being like on display and presented. But they'll feel more safe, because it'll be anonymous. But you'll still learn about these different cultures and the meals from the different cultures.
Especially like, there was an event in the Pepin School Gym when I was in elementary school. And like, I thought it was the coolest thing, but my family wasn't on with the projects. So, I feel like it helps break that barrier as well.
This is.
This is us.
Yes, this is.
Oh, this is us. Okay, go ahead.
This is something. Oh, right, this is the.
Okay. So, I also wanted, well, I want to talk to you also about creating a safe space for discussions where students can raise concerns and talk about issues with the school. We does circle practice. We don't do it every time. This year, it's been a little trickier, because we do have, it comes from the high school, but we also, people are in different places, and we don't really start until 3:30 when we're really, or 3:00 when we're really in a major campaign, then it's like we're actually working heavily. But we tend to have safe spaces where we do circle practice, where kids are able to share in a way, within the boundaries of circle, you know, the restorative practices, what's going on in their lives. And we have found over the years that it's a really wonderful way in which, because I don't have all the kids, they don't come from, you know, my sixth-grade classroom. They actually are coming from different grade levels, different teachers, different things. It's a wonderful way to bring our energies together, so that whatever needs to get off of people's chests gets off their chests. And then, and then after that, we are able to function much better as a whole to get what we need to get done, done. Sometimes things come up and we problem-solve as a, as a team. And we, that happened this year, where some kids were feeling uncomfortable in a classroom with a certain student. And so, we actually role-played ways of problem-solving that. So, it's been really, it's, it's, it's just actually pretty remarkable what these kids are, what they can do. It's great. We also go to We Day. So, this is actually part of why we wanted to come to you, because you guys are so gracious and you're always letting us go to We Day. And you're always like, yay, go, that's great. And we're like so excited that you let us do that the last few years. And hopefully, September 25th, 2019, you'll let us go again. A little plug. And at We Day, which is remarkable, you get to meet, it's a rah-rah, that's what it is. It's a rah-rah. And what happens for, like, there's like, you know, 10,000 kids, all different ages, who come together in order to celebrate creating change and being empowered to do so. There's scores of speakers. Unlike the We Day in LA, which has a lot of star power and really famous singers and dancers, We have that too. But we also are blessed, because what we have is the UN in our neighborhood. And We Day always coincides with the assembly that's going on at the UN, where all the countries of the world come together. So, we end up having activists and change agents from the UN coming to speak to us, which is incredible.
So, one person who was at We Day was Kueku Amule, who is Nelson Mandela's grandson.
We also had Justin Trudeau and Sophie Trudeau, and they are the 23rd Prime Minister of Canada and his wife.
We had Martin Luther King III, who's a civil rights activist, a global humanitarian, and a political leader.
Can you pronounce that name? I know, take it in and then pronounce it.
Fumucio Malambo Nkuka.
So, she.
She was like an elder.
Yeah, she is, she was one of the most inspirational people there. She is United Nations Under Secretary General and, yeah, United Nations Under Secretary General and the Executive Director of UN Women, and not to mention the former Deputy President of South Africa. So, she's done so much.
For women's rights.
For women's rights especially.
We also had Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez, who is our Congresswoman now, and was voted into Congress in 2019 elections.
And then, this is really exciting, and we'll just remind you that We were recognized, that if you went on our We WMB, WBS Facebook page, you can actually see a picture of us being recognized on stage at the Barclay Center for the work that we've done and the work we've done with the Water Walk. So, it's been really exciting.
I'll hold on a second. And in the picture that you look up on the website, you can also see We got to quickly meet Spencer West outside. He's an activist.
Spencer West.
Spencer West, he's an activist who, I don't know how, but he lost.
Yeah, from here down.
Yeah, you know more.
Literally from, he has no, like, literally like no legs.
And he climbed Kilimanjaro with no legs, which was really inspiring, and he's an activist. He just, he just, it's amazing, it's really amazing how he conquers that. So, we're gonna pass out the long, boring impact statement.
Sure. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
It's a lot.
And you know, I'll wait till they're done.
Thank you. We have extras.
You know, and the thing that we're really, I actually really am interested in is we really want to create the pipeline. I work with Asher, Asher Hamilton is a colleague to me. We're not in the same school, but we are all about supporting each other in the work that we do. And we want to create a pipeline, literally want to do that from elementary all the way up to the high school. So, elementary, third, fourth graders can come into We and then keep going right into the high school, filtering with Asher and the, and others in those buildings. And right now, we don't know how to get more involvement with the high school. That seems to be a little bit of a challenge, as well as, I'm not, because we do have Jared Orne and Sue Mason sometimes, but Jared and Sue Wilson. But Asher's been a real, and we, and Senator Pepin is difficult. But we really, everything that we do here aligns with the Equity and Inclusion Committee agenda and the goals that we have as a district. We're not, I'm not saying, and neither, none of us are saying that we're the end-all-to-be-all. What we're saying is we're part of the solution, and we want to be part of the solution. And we actually kind of, and I don't know if this is appropriate, but we do need help in figuring out how we can be part of that solution and also, you know, help create that. Because these kids are, you're welcome to come to our We program. You're welcome to come anytime. We may put you to work, but you're welcome to come. It depends what day you come. But I mean, they've, I get, I'm lucky, because I get to watch kids change. And I get to see their eyes open up to something that's not just East Hampton, but the community in this, other communities in this country and in this world, and to really, really care. And they, everything about We is about tolerance, inclusion, loving kindness, compassion, and empathy. It's the stuff that We as teachers, as school committees, as parents, it's what We want to teach our kids, and it's what our future needs. So, if there's any way to help us, or We can help you, you know, do your work better, please just, and your goals and agenda, please let us know. And thank you for the time you gave us tonight. We appreciate it.
We appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you so much.
Can I, can I just say thank you to Ava and Emily Swazniak, and Mrs. Breyer? Wonderful presentation. You are really very inspirational, and I love, I love the word "change agent." I really like them all about that. And you are very inspiring, young ladies, and really, I'm sure your whole group is like that. But you two coming out and speaking like this, you did a wonderful job. A great job. Really proud of you.
He's just taking my anxiety.
Wonderful.
The parents should be very proud.
And I would just, I think, again, thank you very much for coming. I think that one of the things that we definitely are looking at and sort of is how can we vertically align that diversity and equity work across our whole school district? And so, understanding the. Um, and so understanding the, the, um, you know, the foundation that, um, Asher Hamilton does at the high school and other people at the high school and what you guys are doing there at the middle school, um, are important steps towards that. Um, and we're gonna continue to look at ways to help support it and help, um, make sure that work is continued to expand across the entire school district.
Thank you so much.
So thank you for your work.
Yes. And I do wanna say Meredith Bo- Boles has been a really great support to us.
Mm-hmm. She's, she's here in spirit.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Really, I have to go after them. That's a tough act to follow, I think.
Let's go change agent.
So, uh, as promised, we're kind of, we're, the, the end of the year is quickly approaching and I wanted to share with you the entry findings that are the culmination of the work that I've kind of been focused on this school year ever since I started on July first. So I shared with you, um, last week, the results of the findings, the actual like eighteen, twenty-page document, so I'm sure you all read that thoroughly. But in case you didn't, I've highlighted a, just a few slides for you that will tell you a little bit about some of the outcomes of my presentation. So these are my findings. So I just want to remind everyone, um, on the school committee and in the, in the audience listening at home, that some issues that were, um, here when I walked in the door were the report from the Attorney General's office that highlighted the equity work we needed to undertake. We also had the new pre-K through eight school building, which had just been approved a few months before my arrival. Um, I had the task right at the beginning of securing a new administrator for two of our, um, elementary schools. We had, within the first week of my arrival, we had a less than favorable air quality report issued against our middle school by the Department of Public Health. And we were also looking at addressing the needs at one of our elementary schools, which was identified in turnaround status due to low MCAS scores. So I didn't have much to do, but, um. So the entry process, so this is kinda follows a standard formula that all new superintendents undertake. I conducted interviews and meetings with parents, faculty, staff and members of the community. I conducted an online survey distributed to all families and staff in the district. I visited classrooms in every school and I attended community and school events. And I think I listed a lot of them in the document that I gave you. Um, and so I wa- I wanted to share just this quote that I think came from a parent, but it really summarizes or it captures a lot of what I heard from a cross-representation of people. East Hampton's greatest strength lies in the faculty that work in our district. I heard that from parents at every level. I heard it from students, I heard it from administrators, I heard it from community members, school committee members. It was really just a universal thread that was woven throughout all my conversations. So some emerging themes that came out of my work. Theme number one that I heard from just about everyone was really to put a focus or spotlight on equity, diversity and inclusion. And I chose this image for a particular reason. I think that it's important that people understand there is a difference between equality and equity. Um, not every child needs to have the same exact resources at every grade level. Because if they have the same exact delivery of resources, they may not be as able to function, um, with those resources. So equity is really about giving kids what they need at their level. So it might be more for one student and a little bit less for another, but that's kind of the work that we need to focus on when we talk about equity. What are the, what are the applications that we need to have, um, happening in all of our schools at every grade level, every day? And are there some places that we need to do more and some places that we can maybe do a little bit less? Yes, that can probably happen. And that's what we really need to put a lens on. And we have our equity committees at all levels now. We have a pre-K through eight equity committee and we have a nine through twelve equity committee that are in the midst of preparing recommendations for me to review this summer. Um, and I'll bring those to the leadership team, but they're working and those are made up of students, school committee, administrators, teachers, community members. So they're bringing a lot of the issues to the forefront for me. But what I heard from people, from parents, from staff, from the community is that they really wanna address issues in grades pre-K through twelve and they wanna expand resources, practices and procedures. This is not anything that I, I, I think is unique only to East Hampton. I think these are universal themes. And I think that if schools do not have this as an issue that they're looking at, they should. So I am happy to have this as one of the themes that will be on our focus going forward. It has been all year, but we'll continue to focus on it. Theme number two, improve technology. I think it's important to note that, um, this again was a universal theme that I heard from parents, from teachers, um, from s- administrators, um, from community members. We need more technology. We need more, we need better access to technology at very young ages. We need an ability to support keyboarding and coding for students. We need technology that works consistently. We need professional development to support our staff to learn how to better utilize and infuse technology in the curriculum. And we need a plan to replace, update and gain access to new technology solutions. That is something that I am prioritizing. I saw that from day one when I entered the school district and so what I was hearing from stakeholders validated what I already saw in the district. Uh, whoops, I went backwards, sorry. Um, the third theme that's coming forward is appropriate levels of funding. And I know we just left a finance, um, committee meeting from the city council and I don't want to say this is a situation that's only related to East Hampton or only related to our city budget. This is around all different factions of funding, from state funding levels to grants, to city budgets, to all the different resources that we can use. And I highlighted this in two different ways. I wanted you to see, um, that the, the kind of the blue or the aqua highlighted really came from staff. That came from faculty and the yellow items came primarily from parents. So I wanted you to know that I really heard from a lot of different people and people have, um, different needs and wants. Uh, people in the community really want to see an expansion of programs like the arts, um, physical education, more offerings both in terms of duration and quantity of programming, specifically at Whitebrook and at the high school. Um, I'll also, I'll tell you some more about what the parents wanted. They wanted improvements to our transportation system to increase ridership and revise the fee for service model. That's not news to anyone at this table. We've been hearing that since the beginning of the school year. Parents are looking for, um, us to allocate more financial support for internships and cooperative learning opportunities for students at the high school. They want kids to have more job shadowing and internship experiences. They're looking for us to allocate more funding for technology and resources for science and diversity. Those came up in three separate things and I kind of lumped them all together. And they're also looking for funding for resources for marketing and public relations to restore and build the image of the district, which, you know, I didn't, I didn't see that one coming. That was a surprise, but that was very interesting. So I wanted you to know that that came from parents. And for the faculty, secure funding for a guidance director to manage counselors, conduct restorative justice, justice and deal with the behaviorists in the district. We're looking for, the faculty are really looking for more guidance support across the board because it's a challenge for teachers to deal with all the social emotional issues. And keep in mind, we don't have counselors at the elementary levels anymore. Those were cut years ago from the budgets and they've never been restored. So it's a struggle. It's a real struggle. Um, and teachers and faculty are also looking for increased funding for professional development, particularly in the area of social emotional well-being. It's a theme tonight and dealing with students and trauma. More opportunities for teachers to collaborate at all levels. So that is around our funding theme. Uh, theme four, improving communication with all stakeholders. More frequent communication is what I heard. More open communication around decisions, not after the fact, but kind of information about what's going into the decision-making process. Using Facebook, the district website to highlight our schools, kind of putting ourselves out there. Um, I put in here that I'm going to be introducing a Twitter account for the schools because that was one of the things that people were, were talking about social media and how they access social media. And we are, we need to do a better job, we heard from people, around developing protocols for more consistent messaging across buildings. I heard in some of my forums with parents that their child is expected to do this from this building in a particular grade level, but then they hear on the baseball field that kids in the same grade level in another building are expected to do different things. So there's like a lack of consistency and when we bring all these parents together, there's, uh, the message gets a little bit lost. So they're looking for some protocols around that and bringing more consistency to that. So those are my four big themes that came out of my entry findings. And I will say, I think it was, I don't know if it was actually in the report, but the online survey that I conducted, I had over two hundred responses from families. So that was a lot of data to cull through. And it was, I think I was probably out of all, the forty new superintendents across the state of Massachusetts, I had the most feedback for an online survey. And I think that it's a double-edged sword. I think parents really had things to tell me and they really wanted me to know things. So I think there's a, a high degree of accountability that comes with that. And so finally, what happens now? Now that the findings have been shared with you, I am working on developing strategic objectives to address these themes. Um, we are having a summer retreat for the administrators. It will be part of the work that we do on the three days of our retreat. They'll be review- reviewing my objectives that I've developed. They will be, um, critiquing them, fine-tuning them. And then as a team, we will define the action steps we wanna put in place and how we're going to link them and prioritize what we wanna do next. We will share those out then with faculty in the fall and kind of adjust our focuses as we go forward. So that will be, I think, some of the driving force for budget discussions, for, um, the challenges that we have in, in coming in front of us that will help fine-tune what we wanna do and why we want to do it. So that's it in a nutshell. Any questions? No?
I just wanna say, I think it's really great timing. I think that, you know, um, there has been a lot of change going on and, um, work that's being done, needs to be done and focused on. And I just appreciate, uh, the timing of you coming on board with our school district and the work that you put into this review. Um, and, uh, I think it's just, it's very helpful to sort of see where we're on track and where we can keep working more, uh, to improve things like communication and other things like that, as you mentioned in your themes. So, um, I think it's just, it's great timing for the school district and, and thank you very much for the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated.
I'm just so impressed by the two hundred respondents you got. There's gotta be something right about the communication that you're doing there.
And the need for our parents to speak up.
Yeah, they, well, uniform, they certainly let us know and tell you, so it's good. And I don't think I have to do the third part, because I know how you did it.
Okay, so we're gonna skip over that.
Yeah.
That's kind of where I thought we were going. Okay, so we're onto Matters for Action boards.
All right, I move to approve the school payroll dated May ninth, twenty nineteen in the amount of five hundred forty-five thousand, two hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty-six cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated May ninth, twenty nineteen in the amount of four hundred six thousand, three hundred eighteen dollars and nineteen cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Okay, um, I move to accept the meetings, uh, meeting minutes from our regular session meeting on April twenty-third, twenty nineteen.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
And then finally, we have from Judy Avril at Maple School, a request to open a school choice slot in the second grade to enable a student who is a, a current second grader whose family is moving to Holyoke. This wouldn't allow the student to remain in district for the remainder of the year. Um, so I think that's fantastic when our schools and teachers are willing to do that for students so they don't have to have that disruption. I would make a motion to accept this request.
Can we, well, second and then discussion, all right?
Yes, then we can discuss.
So one question about that, I know that we've done a lot of review of where placements are open. Uh, once we approve a choice, isn't that allows them to continue to have that choice into future years?
Yes.
So I just wanna, before we say yes for the student, um, is that, has it been reviewed? How that will affect third grade, fourth grade and on from there to stay within current staffing and not make any changes or over-expansion of classrooms and such?
There's already a student, so.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? So, uh, we'll take a roll call vote to move into executive session. We are not gonna adjourn here. We're going to have a roll call vote to conduct some bargaining with the Teachers Association. And we will not re- return.
All right, Garcia.
Uh, Jonathan Schmidt.
Marissa Perry.
Cynthia Kozinski.
Baron Goldstein.
Shannon Dunham.